Good evening. Welcome to the council meeting of November the 10th. If we could please stand, Mr. Arnold, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice served.
Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll call.
Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Here.
Ms. Gentry. Mr. Koz.
Here.
Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Spetzel.
Here.
Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Public Works Director Litzkevic.
Thank you. Ms. Gentry, did you get ahold of me? She's under the weather this evening. We wish her the best. Approval of the minutes, you've all had a chance to look at them. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, they will stand as printed and approved. Thank you. Correspondence, do we have any correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence.
Any correspondence from my colleagues?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on now to a public hearing. Mrs. Rossmarin, would you read the topic of the public hearing, please?
Upon the proposed ordinance creating the Sandridge and Harbor Crest Tax Increment Financing Incentive Districts, declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, authorizing school compensation payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district.
Mr. Arnold. This is yours, tax incentive?
Yes. My understanding was Ted was going to be doing the presentation on the public hearing.
Correct, you're the sponsor, that's why I transferred.
Okay, I'm going to defer to Ted Esborn on this, thank you.
Mr. Esborn, Director of Community Development, thank you.
Thank you. Council President, as Council Clerk Rossmarin said, this is the public hearing for the Sandridge and Harbor Crest Tax Increment Financing Incentive Districts. The first reading for the TIF ordinance on this took place on October 27th. Tonight's hearing is required by state law, which says that not later than 30 days prior to adopting an ordinance under this section, if the municipal corporation intends to apply for exemptions from taxation, the legislative authority of the municipal corporation shall conduct a public hearing on the proposed ordinance. It also says that not later than 30 days prior to the public hearing, the legislative authority shall give notice of the public hearing to every real property owner whose property is located within the boundaries of the proposed incentive district. The notice shall include a map of the proposed incentive district on which the legislative authority of the municipal corporation shall have delineated an overlay. So, we have complied with those requirements. This is the notice that went out to Polte Homes of Ohio. See, all of these are the parcel numbers for the new Sandridge Run development. You will see that it gives notice to Polte, let me shift this up a little bit, it gives notice to Polte of a November 10th public hearing, that's today, and complying with state law, this notice went out on October 10th, 30 days prior. So, and then, one more thing, the map that is required to be in the notice to each property owner within the district, so I will leave that up as the map of the incentive districts for this tip.
Mr. Esborn, if you could explain that there's actually these two colors and they're both part of the same tip?
Right, you know, correct. So, the area outlined in blue surrounds the future Harbor Crest subdivision. The area in yellow outlines the Sandridge Run development, which is currently under construction. We asked Mr. Russ Balthus just this week to clarify if, you know, on a very technical level, if this is one TIF or two. He focused on the fact that it is one ordinance, so I think the way he describes it is, you know, one TIF with two districts. So, the state focuses these public hearings on those property owners within the district and making sure that they have a chance to voice any input about the TIF. Obviously, we have a public input session here as part of this hearing where anyone in the audience is able to speak, and we welcome their comments as well. It is also part of the state law that councils' vote on this TIF ordinance cannot take place until 30 days after this public hearing, so the third reading and the vote on this TIF ordinance won't take place until December 15th. As we've discussed in this chamber for much of the last two years, TIF, Tax Increment Financing, is a tool that the state of Ohio created for local governments to be able to fund projects using future property tax revenue. There is now a great FAQ section on the city's website about TIF that I would encourage people to take a look at. I am not going to get into an explanation of TIF tonight, conceptually. The city's consultant on TIF, Russ Balthus from Kootak Rock, couldn't be here with us tonight because he's the council president in Cuyahoga Falls, he's at his own council meeting, but with the vote on this, TIF ordinance not taking place until mid-December, we have the opportunity to take questions to Russ and get answers back to the folks who asked. Russ may be needed for those tough questions, but I think I can cover the basics of this TIF. The first thing I want to note is that this TIF is totally unrelated to the power plant and has nothing to do with the TIF that is contemplated for the power plant site. It had a totally different origin, did this TIF. Even before Sandridge Run and Harbor Crest were realities, we knew that we would need to improve traffic and infrastructure around the central intersection in town, and Mayor Spetzel and the administration wondered, is it possible through TIF to create a revenue stream to support those necessary projects? And it was with that question in mind that we engaged Russ Balthus, who said, yes, incentive district TIF would be the best route to use TIF to achieve that goal and, in fact, to capture all of the value increase at Sandridge Run in particular, we would have to file the TIF ordinance by the end of 2025. So, the purpose of this incentive district TIF is to use revenue from these developments to fund traffic improvements and infrastructure around them. These are the public improvements defined in our TIF ordinance, roadway improvements, water system improvements, sanitary sewer improvements, storm drainage improvements, pedestrian sidewalks and bike paths, streetlights, gas facilities, electric facilities, parks and recreation facilities located within one mile of any incentive district and all appurtenances thereto, and I believe we will also add specifically traffic control devices to that list of public improvements. This is a 30-year, 100% TIF. It makes the Avon Lake Schools and the Lorain County Joint Vocational Schools whole, which is spelled out in Section 6 of the ordinance. It says that distribution first to the Avon Lake City School District and to the Lorain County Joint Vocational School, each an amount equal to the amount the respective school district would otherwise have received if the improvement had not been exempt from taxation pursuant to this ordinance. The TIF revenue will go into a TIF fund maintained by the city. Section 5 of the ordinance says, "The TIF fund shall be maintained in the custody of the city and shall receive all distributions to be made to the city pursuant to Section 6 of the ordinance." And then, finally, the property owners and the local developers do not receive any financial benefit under this TIF, aside, of course, from the benefit of the future improvements made by the city. That's all I've got to sort of set the stage for the public hearing. I'm interested, or, you know, open to any questions from the city council.
Thank you. And colleagues have any questions? Mr. Koz, please.
Yep, thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues in the administration for getting Russ to, Mr. Balthus, to agree to include the traffic control devices, which includes the crosswalk signals as a part of this. I mentioned this earlier, prior to the meeting, to Mrs. Rossmarin, and I want to say it publicly as well, too. We have an email from Mr. Balthus to the mayor, CCing Ted Esborn, that basically includes the language of traffic control devices and that their understanding of this is, yes, this does include crosswalk signals. If there's a way that we could include this email with the record, Mrs. Rossmarin, or otherwise memorialize it, because someday when we're not here, there could be a difference of opinion as to the wording of that, and I wanted to be clear that at the time, this was the understanding by everybody. Thank you.
Good point, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I did speak with Mr. Flipkowski this afternoon, and I actually talked to him on a couple other planning commission issues, and he did ask me about the TIF, and he would like someone, either Ted or someone from the administration, to let him know exactly what his new homeowners can expect from this TIF. And I said, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot that they are going to expect from it, but he did ask me that. He apologized that he couldn't get out here today, but he wanted to make sure that his question was asked, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, any further discussion?
No, I would say that taxes will be collected in the manner and amount that they normally would be, so the homeowners, or in this case, currently Polte, or future homeowners will see no difference. Taxes will be paid as they otherwise, except for as are described in the ordinance and directed to the pilots.
That's what I indicated to him. I just, he would like to hear maybe from Ted, I suspect.
Sure.
Tomorrow, if that's possible.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other council members? Okay, well, at this point, we're going to go out to the audience. If you could keep your comments to this particular topic, please, and say your name and the city that you're from, come forward. Anybody want to have any input on the public hearing for the TIF, for Sandridge Run and Harbor Crest? Okay, oh, we do have someone, okay, come on.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake resident, 20 years, certified public accountant, real estate attorney. Yeah, this TIF is different than the Avon Lake Power Plant, because in that case, the school district doesn't get any money, so they have a service payment, and it's my understanding that the net difference is going to be really, since there's got to be service payments, that the only funds that are going to be collected will be the county share and the city share that's going to go in the fund. But I have a problem in the sense of Avon Lake. It seems like we've been over backwards for developers. You know, Avon Commons, okay, which was on the ballot, was challenged, they put in $1.5 million in improvements to the developer with no TIF, no TIF at all. It seems like we've been over backwards for developers. You know, Mr. Polte, you know, he can't even pay for a gate, he tore down trees, you know? What kind of, you know, we're complaining about a traffic issue in the southeast corridor, that's because we overdeveloped it. This council approved all those subdivisions, and so did Planning Commission, and Ms. Fenderbosch was council representative, so she's responsible for the traffic problem in the southeast corridor, because she approved them, she didn't ask for a traffic study. We should have a mandatory traffic study, all right? We don't do it. They get away with whatever they want, and, you know, I think, I hope new council has a different perspective so that developers are treated fair, but we don't bend over backwards for them. Thank you.
Anybody else want to come forward with any topic on this subject? Seeing nobody else come forward, then I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Arnold. You're the sponsor, you opened it, I'm going to have you close it.
Yeah. Sorry. Thanks, Ted, you did a great job. We have the second reading tonight, we'll talk about it again there in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, the public hearing has come to an end, thank you. Now, we're going to open it back up to public input, this time it is on any topic that you'd like, and you have five minutes per our code, Section 220.21A1, if anyone wants to come forward.
You're just going to go back up?
Well, I'm going to go later.
Okay. I'll be last. Good evening, everybody. My name is Chuck Kraft, and I am the executive director of a place called Primary Purpose. We're in Lorain County in Sheffield Township. I don't know if any of you guys heard what we do over there. We're nonprofit, we're addressing alcohol and drug problems with the men and women in Lorain County and the surrounding counties, but mainly Lorain County. This month, on the 16th, we're going to be open nine years. We've had the opportunity to see some great success cases that come out of our program. It's a 60-day program, a Level 2 program, the 60 days, and then after that, they have a choice whether they want to stay on and find a job and look for work. We help them, we have a workforce development program that kind of helps them do barriers that, you know, resume writing, maybe identification problems, driver's license. But I came tonight at the request of Mr. Smith, asked me to come up and speak on, speak on behalf of Primary Purpose Center. We're also having a fundraiser that I mentioned to Mr. Coys, that, Coys is how you say?
Koz.
Koz, my fault. That I would like to offer a table for the council and the mayor's court if they'd like to come and join, just to see what kind of stuff we're doing. I'd also open an invitation for anybody to come to the building and just take a tour and maybe talk to some of the residents and the staff, and just to see how we're trying to help the community get through these tough times, but I appreciate it. Our fundraiser is November 22nd, this Saturday. It's going to be at New Russia Lodge, New Russia Township Lodge, 2 o'clock. But our website is primarypurposecenter.com. You can get on there and kind of like browse around and see all the stuff we've been doing over the past years and see what kind of program that we have. I know that we've worked with some of the people in this county, or this, this Avon Lake, I'm sorry, but mainly in the county, all the court systems, the hospitals. So, we're trying to do our part to keep the crime down and change people's lives so that they're doing something different, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much for coming up.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? Five minutes.
Mary Schneider, 143 Avon Building Road. So, I see that there's going to be a second reading on ordinance 25167, on this terrible purchase agreement with Allard. I'm asking you to vote against it. The city is paying way too much, $15 million for land that's not, the 23 acres are not valued at that, and Allard literally paid nothing to NRG for that site. So, that's one aspect of this, but what's more troubling to me is that the purchase order, the purchase agreement, makes the city liable for remediating the land. Once the deal is closed, if the city finds contaminants, heavy metals, or whatever in the soil, it's too late. They have to hold, the city has to hold Allard harmless, and the city becomes liable for anything. Now, there is going to be a short period of time before the deal closes for the city to inspect the land, okay? But once the deal closes, that's it, and I think the city's going to open itself up to some lawsuits. I mean, I understand coal has a lot of contaminants and heavy metals in it. I mean, I don't think there's any way that Allard can guarantee that that soil is going to be, you know, pristine and pure, so this is foolish. I don't know what the big hurry is to close this deal. And the other aspect about this is that this proposed park, I don't think it's going to get all that many people going to it, because it's, it's not, you know, it's pretty far in the corner of the city. Miller Road Park doesn't get that much, that much use. I mean, people use it for boat launches on the weekends in the summer, but it's primarily would benefit whatever housing is built on that site, you know, if that's actually what happens, because whoever buys the land, they might do something completely different. I don't know, but let's say the high-rise housing does go up, they're going to be the people adjacent to it, and they'll benefit from it, and so I don't understand why we're in such a rush to, you know, push this terrible, this terrible deal through. I mean, basically, this is a pump and dump on the part of Allard to just make as much money as they can, sell this property, you know, part of it to the city for as much as they can, get a TIF from us, and then sell the rest of it to a developer. I think that, I think you're foolish if you pass this.
Thank you. Anybody else on any topic want to come forward?
So, I'm seeing a bunch of ordinances for first readings, the mayor entering into agreements with Verdantis, Kyle Brownfield remediation program phase 2, assessment grants, so on and so forth. Now, I understand that the grant portal just opened in regards to Brownfields and stuff with the state. Goes till the middle of, first, let's say, the 8th of December. So, it has time. I don't understand why they're on here. I don't understand the necessity for the arrows, which are emergency passage. This isn't an emergency. Need to find out if they even qualify. We don't know if we'll get it. I know other people who are applying for it, so I don't understand why we're trying to make this an emergency, just because you all think 30 days should be enough time. So, the first reading, we're making an emergency to pass. That's incorrect. Shouldn't be that. As this woman just stated, why are we in such a hurry always to do everything? Amy, who is unfortunately not here tonight, used to always ask, why are we doing this all on emergency? Why is it always an emergency? Makes us look stupid, she said once. I would tend to agree. So, based upon some of these factors, again, we're trying to force things down our throats. Finance directors have proposed certain surplus properties, that's fine, all well and good. I don't, I just don't understand, and then we have a property, this parcel in the property, I don't know where this is, nobody knows unless you have a map, and we're not getting time to even go and look, because you want to pass it on an emergency tonight. What would be the point of even knowing that? It'd be futile, be a waste of time. Again, I would like that information. I can't get it now, I can't use a projector to look it up. I don't understand why we're even wasting the time of having the readings. Just pass it and run with it, because you don't follow your own legislation, you don't do what the procedures are. Bernz Ockner Agreement, nobody ever saw it at a committee. Mr. Shamir and Ms. Gentry both said, what is this? We've never seen this before. Yet those behind the scenes, you guys hadn't seen it, you knew what you were doing, because these are freshmen, you didn't care, you were running them over, didn't give them the proper knowledge. Are the new people who've been elected council at large, are they going to get tutelage? Or are you just going to let them fend for themselves again and say, you learn it as you go? Because half the time, Mr. Shamir doesn't get the information, doesn't get included in it. Going to do that to these same people, or do you already have them in your pocket? And you don't have to worry about it. Mr. Koz has been spewing Mr. Matt Reynolds's name repeatedly as the person to vote for at all the Democratic functions. Doesn't do anything for the other candidates. Oh, wait, because one of them was Malachi. He doesn't like Malachi. He doesn't like the fact that he stood up to the administration. Speaking of standing up to the administration, so the citizens of Avon Lake, we were in appellate court this week for the removal of the mayor. Both sides were heard, will be determined shortly, we hope, but the point of the matter is, is that even in that state, when you're at the appellate level, and the only thing that you're talking about is law, the attorneys representing the mayor still want to bring out a point that they want to say that this is a personal vendetta by Mr. Phillips against the mayor, because what Mr. Phillips incurred over his time outside the waterworks, where he was supposedly urinating in the bushes, this is a joke. It's law. We're at the appellate level. These kinds of things shouldn't be happening. That shows how absurd this administration is. I think you need to follow along, check these things out. There's a whole thing that I had someone drop off in my mailbox again, talking about Mr. Koz. You might want to know that information before you vote next time. Hope you have a wonderful evening.
Anybody else want to come forward? Come on up, yes. Just give us your name, the city that you're from. If you could, right here, so we could pick it up on the tape.
Nancy Collins, from Aquamarine Boulevard.
Thank you.
I had not planned to speak, but after hearing some of the other speeches, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. You're doing an amazing job under very difficult circumstances, and for those of us who watch the council meetings and the videos, I think it has become a personal vendetta. That's just my opinion, but I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward on any topic? Come on up, sir, thank you.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake resident for 20 years, concerned citizen, certified public accountant, real estate attorney. I prepared a chart so the residents of Avon Lake can really understand this power plant redevelopment. I believe the zoning method is best for the Avon Lake residents, and you can look at the chart. You can see the TIF section and the rezoning section. TIF section, we buy the parkland for $15 million, $15 million in improvements, $30 million future tax dollars, TIF is taken away from the school district. Parkland is being bought at 1.29 acres, as Mr. Shamir indicated. Rezoning, all 42 acres gets rezoned with the 1219 overlay district, which we have already, it was drafted, and they have to provide 20 acres, which is a net ordinance, and parkland is free, no cost to the city, no cost to the school district. Developer uses the $30 million for improvements, streets, sores, under the rezoning, he pays for it, the developer pays for it, which is the new, normal situation. Developer pays for the infrastructure. Under the TIF, $60 million of TIF dollars are used, $30 for the parkland and improvements, and $30 for the developer for the infrastructure. Under the rezoning, the school district keeps the $60 million of TIF dollars. Under the TIF, we're basically giving a developer a subsidy, corporate subsidy. Under the TIF, we're basically giving a developer a subsidy, corporate subsidy. We hear a lot about how the rich get subsidy and we have benefits. Well, we're given A L E R G, okay? You know, uh, whose parent is on a, uh, uh, stock exchange, sixty million dollars, okay? Under the, under the rezoning, developer doesn't get a subsidy. Under the TIF, the parkland's not free. We got to pay thirty million dollars of TIF. And again, it's costing that land one point two-nine acres, thanks to Mr. Shamir. With the rezoning, uh, the school district will keep all thirty million dollars for the TIF and the parkland is free. Now, last week, uh, uh, we're looking at a purchase agreement. And Mr. Davis gets up here and says, one of the goals that was predominant and that we accomplished with this agreement is the people wanted parkland. Wanted parkland, okay? It was utmost important. We heard it from this so-called Brownfield Committee, okay? But you know what? There's no parkland in that agreement. Where's the submerged landlies? No beach, no lakefront, no deal. That's what Ms. Gentry said. Where is it? Why wasn't it put in there? Is he looking out for the best interests of the city? Is he carrying out the purpose of this so-called citizen group that wanted parkland? I bet you that citizen group was never asked the question, do you want the parkland at the expense of sixty million, uh, uh, dollars from TIF from the schools? Ask them that question. Why don't we do a survey about that and see what the answer is? Because we never got a- any, any data. I asked for it, just like the Brownfield Committee meetings. They're nowhere. You know, this lady may, 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 may think that it's criticism, but I'm just giving facts. She doesn't like it, that's her opinion, okay? But I live in this city too, and I pay taxes. And I don't want to see the, uh, money go to a developer that's going, that should be going to the schools unless they prove but for that that property would never be developed without a TIF. And we know that's false because if that was the case, they would never bought that property. Mr. Davis doesn't tell you that a good real estate attorney, when there's questions and they need the entitlements, they do a contingency offer based on the entitlements. He didn't tell you that. He didn't tell you that. Really? Mr. Davis is not looking out for the best interests of the city. He isn't. You may think so, I don't. Rezoning method is best. Oh, we can't do it, we can't do it. Oh, they're going to sue us again. Yeah, they're going to sue us again. This is the mayor in Eber coming up with phony baloney suing things, okay? You know? What? You're going to go to the bullies? I guess the mayor is, uh, you know, i- i- can't stand up to a bully. And Ebert, you know, his lawyer at the Ninth District Appeal was totally disrespectful. And I will take care of that, Mr. Ebert. I will.
Thank you, your time is.
There's what they call bar complaints.
Um, is there anybody else that would like to come forward on any topic? Um, Mr. Davis, would you like to come forward? Oh, could, could, could you take your, just a moment?
I don't know, mine. He can get his own.
Thank you. Could you take your frame too, sir?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Todd Davis outside Council at Avon Lake in connection with the power plant redevelopment. Happy to be here tonight. Just wanted to briefly respond to, uh, the lady who spoke briefly.
She's left.
She left. Well, that, I'll do it for the record. You know, I, I've spent many, many different, uh, presentations addressing a number of the issues, uh, that, that citizen raised. I would ask her to go back and review some of the, the lengthy presentations that have been made to this council with respect to those issues. Um, that being said, to just briefly address some of the issues that she raised. Uh, number one, what's the need for the rush, I think was one of her primary complaints. I think as we all know, this has been going on for over two years. Uh, and we have debated robustly all of these issues, uh, that were raised here by many people, but especially by, uh, the lady who spoke. From my perspective, we've done extensive work in connection with crafting an agreement that meticulously addresses, uh, the concerns that I would have as a lawyer on behalf of, uh, the city of Avon Lake. Putting aside, um, Mr. Phillips's statement that I'm not acting on behalf of the city, I feel absolutely confident that I'm protecting the city's best interests with respect to the structure of this agreement. I've done more of these types of deals than just about anyone in the United States, certainly more than anyone in the state of Ohio. And I have absolute confidence with respect to the way this agreement has been structured. Uh, I have confidence in the environmental professionals that we've brought in, some of the leading environmental professionals who do this kind of work, not only in the state of Ohio, but I would argue in the United States. I have absolute confidence in Steve Gross as a certified professional. Um, I've worked with him on a number of different redevelopments, uh, as complicated as the development that we're working on here. So, with respect to the concerns about environmental issues, there have been literally hundreds of similar projects done in the state of Ohio very successfully. Many of the most complicated ones I've personally been involved in. And, this is no different than many of the other projects that we've worked on. We will integrate all of these issues with Ohio EPA. We will work with our team. We've worked very well with, uh, Sellers Environmental Consultants and their team to reach what I think has been a, a very well-vetted and appropriated, uh, appropriate agreement. There will be no closing and, no matter how long it, it takes, unless we get a note for the ration letter by our own certified professional. Certainly, a- again, based on the issues that we understand, you know, w- we will be able to, to work through, understand all of the environmental issues, investigate them and remediate them to applicable standards, send it to Ohio EPA, work in collaboration with Ohio EPA, and then close this transaction. So, from an environmental liability perspective, I don't share the same concerns that were just raised. We've got multiple layers of protection as I presented historically. Number one, it includes our own certified professional doing the work and signing off on it before closing. Number two, a robust indemnity supported by Allard with respect to the environmental issues. Number three, an environmental insurance policy for which will be named as an additional insured. You know, from a structuring perspective, it just doesn't get better than that in my world. So, uh, I, I have confidence in that, in that process. There's going to be an entire work session, uh, next week with respect to the TIF and the TIF process. Berns Ockner will be here to discuss the issues that were raised by Mr. Phillips, uh, in connection with the TIF. One of the primary issues that I raised last week in my presentation for thirty or forty-five minutes that we debated, uh, with council and others, included the TIF. And I, I think we'll defer most of those issues, but one of the things that wasn't focused on was the taking under the Fifth Amendment, which is a huge concern that will be addressed next week. With respect to the submerged landlies, we'll talk about that as my time is running out, but I just wanted to quickly run through, uh, the different issues that were raised thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? Seeing none, then we're going to go on with our agenda. Thank you very much for coming in and giving us your opinion. Um, the reports section is now, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There's, uh, twenty-two items on our agenda tonight, so I'll try to run through this rather quickly. Um, last week, we announced that the Alps Towers, who are original to the playground, had to be taken down for safety concerns. Just want to run through some questions or answers from, to some questions that have popped up, uh, as a result of that. Um, the original playground was taken down in December of twenty-one. Uh, it's our intent, it was our intention to preserve those two original towers to serve as a gateway to the Alps, uh, and to honor those community volunteers that helped build that original playground. Uh, the original plan to preserve those, uh, was not for play structure, it was just for a visual, and, uh, it was not to be used as part of the play structures. In late October twenty-five, it was determined through further review and consultation with the city administration, Kim Lee Horn, our landscape architect, and RJ Platten, the general contractor, that even if refurbished and sealed, the towers pose two greatest safety risks to remain. Uh, and again, we're committed to honoring that park's, uh, past, and we'll explore additional ways to do that. The bricks, uh, it was a, uh, a topic of conversation as well. The original donor bricks that were incorporated into the playground area will be reincorporated into a new pathway leading from the playground from Blessed Park to the, uh, playground itself, and then additional ones will be used on the north side when that phase is, uh, completed. So, all, all donor bricks will be reen- reused in the process. Uh, the mound, there was conversation about the mound. I would encourage everybody then when we open this up to go to the top of that mound and take in the view of Lake Erie. It's, uh, quite a sight. It's a, it's a great observation area, maximizes the view of Lake Erie and provides additional, uh, recreational opportunities, including it's anticipated that when we do, uh, um, concerts in the park, that that will serve as a, uh, amphitheater-type seating experience. Will you, as you listen to the, to the concert, you'll be looking over the lake. So, that'll be a great, uh, addition to the park area. As far as the project delays, there's a lot of concern about why the project delays. I'll go back to the original, uh, that this has been delayed over three years due to a lawsuit that was filed by an individual who was one of the vendors. We, um, sorry.
Excuse me, could you pass this down to the gentleman at the end? Oh, yeah, some?
Okay. We're good? Okay.
Good, thank you.
So, this lawsuit delayed the project for more than three years. We eventually, um, were successful in defeating that lawsuit, but it delayed it for three years. And, uh, that began in twenty-one. Uh, we reinstituted the process and that newest process actually started in March of twenty-twenty-four. And of course, this project will come to completion probably this month. Uh, we're hoping to have a ribbon cutting for Phase Two of this project, uh, which is nearly completed sometime in November, maybe early December. It depends on, again, the completion of some of the items that are outstanding. This Phase Two included, of course, all the playground equipment, the lighting, the fitness loop, uh, additional stormwater management. And again, um, this is, uh, to replace a playground that was built in the mid nineteen-nineties that, uh, had unfortunately seen better days. And, uh, as, even though we tried to do the best, prior city administrations tried to do the best they could to preserve that, it was a wooden structure that was very old and needed replacement. So, I just want to go through that really quickly as far as the Alps goes and the towers and the concerns that were out there. Um, I also wanted to note that next Monday, we have two work sessions before our, uh, collective committee meeting. One will be for the traffic study results for the Hanford Lear Road, and then one will be as, uh, Mr. Davis indicated, for a TIF discussion. So, any TIF-related questions relative to the power plant presentation will be, uh, discussed there. If you have questions, feel free to get questions to us ahead of time so we can answer any specific questions you may have. I also want to note that November twenty-second, from two-thirty to six-thirty, we're going to have our Light Up The Park event. Uh, we've expanded that. Uh, we're really looking forward to it. We have more information on our website regarding that. Also want to announce that last week, our Avon Lake Police Department attended the AAA Community Safety Awards, and for the fourth consecutive year, the police department was awarded the highest award, the Platinum Award, for pedestrian and traffic safety. And it requires that you improve your traffic safety and pedestrian safety year over year, and we were able to do that again, and so we received the highest award. So, I'm very proud of our police department for that. And lastly, um, uh, Councilwoman Gentry, Gentry could not be here today, so I wanted to pass along a couple of things on her behalf. NOPEC has set electric and gas rates for this coming year, beginning January twenty-sixth through May twenty-sixth. Their standard program price for electrical will be eight point nine-nine cents per kilowatt hour, and their standard cost for gas, uh, cents per cubic foot is point zero seven-one-nine cents. And again, you can opt out of, uh, uh, the NOPEC, and you can go out onto, uh, different websites and find, uh, competing, but I just want to announce that those are their rates moving forward. And that is all I believe I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That would be apples to apples if somebody would want to look at.
Apples to Apples is, is a really good site where you can go on and compare all different, uh, rates from different providers.
Provided by the state of Ohio. Anybody else want to comment on Mr. Mayor's report? Okay, then we're going to go on now to the council president. Um, several things, mark your dates down. The next council meeting will be Monday, the twenty-fourth, in these chambers. Um, the next CCM will be next week, the seventeenth, and that'll be at seven PM. And as was said, there's going to be two work sessions, the traffic study and the TIF. Two more items I wanted to mention to City Council. One, um, the proposed reworking of the council committees. Uh, the spreadsheet will be sent out to you this week. It is going to align your commissions and your boards with the newly proposed, uh, council, um, committees, and I would like for all of you to take a look at it and give your feedback to, um, Mrs. Ross Maron. Last but not least, uh, please look into your email system. You just received an email today from Rob Ruah. Um, it's a follow-up to the one that Aaron Fatch sent out last week, has to do with the Erie View Tour. And if you could mark on there what your calendar would allow for you to participate, because we'd like to give everybody an opportunity. Any questions on Council President's report? All right, seeing none, we're going to go on now to the Law Director.
No report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for the Law Director? We're going to go on now to the Finance Director.
No report this evening, thank you.
Um, do you want to mention that our very last budget meeting is going to be this Saturday?
Oh, yes. From eight to noon.
Thank you. Any questions for the Finance Director? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go on to the Public Works Director, Mr. Smith. There, I just got it on?
All right.
Okay, very good.
Fair enough. Sorry about that, a little technical difficulty.
Microphone is on.
Uh, I actually do have a handful of updates. Uh, one, I just want to start with just a, a quick touch base on the Lubrissaw spill. Um, I have, uh, received their submission to Ohio EPA, uh, with response to the, to their spill. Uh, a couple takeaway items from their, uh, report to Ohio EPA, um, that they had conducted a root cause analysis, um, had determined a couple items that needed to be updated within their own, um, their own operations, have such, have since made those updates, educated plant employees, and have eliminated other areas, uh, that could lead to potential spills in the future. Um, I've also reached out to Ohio EPA, uh, on their follow-up, and they're still working on that report. So, um, as I receive that, I will push all that out to, uh, everybody, but that's.
Thank you. Uh, real quick, any questions on this particular one? Okay, sir, go on.
Sure. Uh, next thing on the list, uh, the Moorewood Midship Walker Road, RRFB. Uh, foundations for that have been installed, they're concrete securing. Um, it's expected the contractor to install the signal equipment within the next week or so, uh, weather-dependent, of course, as everything is this, this time of year. Um, next item on the list would be, uh, deer calling. Uh, had a meeting, kickoff meeting with, uh, USDA, uh, last week. Um, it was myself and representatives from the Avon Lake PD. We manage, work together as a team to work, manage that program. Um, they have, and, um, had related us, they intend to start dating, uh, December first, and then calling activities could start as early as December eighth, depending on what they're seeing out in the field. Um, as they work through that program, I will provide any updates that are necessary, um, at that time.
Thank you. Any questions on this topic? Seeing none, go ahead, sir.
Uh, last item I have, uh, and it's kind of a big one, is, uh, Walker Road Phase Five. Uh, today's weather hit, and tomorrow's weather does have a little impact to their schedule, uh, but they are looking for, uh, placement of the surface course of asphalt this Thursday and Friday. So, I would recommend everybody to just avoid that in town because there's going to be a lot of activity, uh, going on with the placement of that. Um, but they will be managing it with, uh, managing the traffic with, uh, law enforcement officers and, uh, uh, traffic control.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, seeing, yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, um, when, when are they anticipating that the asphalt plants are going to close? Because I know usually I thought it was around November fifteenth.
So, it, it, it is weather-dependent, and, uh, so right now, they're, they're still anticipating them being open, uh, long enough because we do have a uptick in weather as we're going on, uh, towards the end of the week as far as temperatures go.
All right. Because I see that project on Route Two as well, and they got to be up against it as well, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, at this point, we're going to go on to standing committees, and I'm going to remind council, do you have a suspension of the rules? I'm going to remind council, if you have a suspension of the rule, please explain the reason why. The very first one is building in the utilities, and Ms. Gentry is not here. Any questions that you would normally ask Ms. Gentry? Okay, then we're going to go on, Ben, to Mr. Shamir with Communications, Environmental, and Recreational Programming, sir.
Yes, the next CRP meeting is going to be Monday, November twenty-fourth, at six PM, here in this room. Another item to discuss or to announce is that EAB's meetings have been moved to the first Tuesday of every month. So, the next EAB meeting will be on Tuesday, December second, at the Lake House at six-thirty PM. And the next Communication and Technology Commission meeting will be Thursday, December eleventh, at six PM, at the Avon Lake Public Library.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shamir on this topic? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on now to Economic Development, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you. I have no formal report and no suspension of the rules on any of these readings here tonight. However, regarding ordinance number twenty-five dash one-six-one, there are a couple of minor changes that we need to address. And the first one is in fourteen-eight-four-point-oh-one. Specifically, there's no Board of Building and Zoning Appeals here within the city. So, at the recommendation of the Law Director, my suggestion is to remove that section. The other one is under definitions fourteen-eight-four-dot-nine-eight, under department, that's under C, under department, shall mean or refer to the Building and Zone, Zoning Department of the City of Avon Lake. There is no Building and Zoning Department. So, with these two changes, I will be making a motion to postpone the vote until November twenty-fourth, so that, these changes came about this morning. Somebody brought them up this morning, so I didn't want to make, to amend it tonight. The Law Director needs more time to make these revisions. So, I'll talk about that more than...
So, Mr. Arnold, this will be at the very next council meeting, which is in two weeks.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Arnold on this? Yes, sir. Mr. Shamir.
The question that I've got is mostly with the economic resiliency study and the requirement that was stipulated for a comprehensive infrastructure plan. Since we are moving forward with this purchase-sale agreement, I am wondering where we are with that comprehensive infrastructure plan and what the schedule looks like.
Sir, this has to do with short-term rentals. Is that what you were talking about, short-term rentals?
I am talking with...
I was talking about short-term rentals, but...
No, I'm talking about just economic resilient, I mean, economic development.
If you hang on just for just a second. So, any questions on the short-term rentals? Let's close this one first.
Sure.
All right, sir. Now, you were going into the resiliency. Okay, Mr. Arnold.
I'm going to defer to the mayor on this one.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor?
So, I believe that was one of the six areas within the resiliency plan.
Correct.
So, the infrastructure plan obviously has a lot to do with our capital budget, has a lot to do with the planning done by Public Works in conjunction with our Community Development Department, and I think we have to work through our budget before we can do anything further. We're well aware of that item on the resiliency plan, but it's, we're in very challenging economic times right now, I would say. And until we get a handle on funding, it's going to be very difficult to move forward on that infrastructure plan.
Mr. Shamir?
That is, the component that's described here within this report is more focused in future planning, especially and specifically as it relates to the development of the power plant area and the required infrastructure that is needed for any development. So, that is what I'm referring to, and I'm wondering when that is going to be addressed as we are moving forward with this purchase-sale agreement. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification. And obviously, with the PSA, that's going to be an integral part, and then as we get a developer, obviously, we're working with them. But I understand what you're saying, but that's too common. Thank you.
Mr. Shamir, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Shamir, anything else on, okay, so economic development. Mr. Arnold, anything else on economic development? All done?
I'm all done.
Okay, good enough. All right, Mr. Zuber, Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. We did have a finance committee meeting on the third, that was last Monday, in these chambers. We had several items. The first is a license plate fee increase, although that is on for first reading, twenty-five-one-seventy-six. I will be making a motion to remove that based on conversations I had with the council president earlier today, and I guess some of the discussion that was at the Budget Committee meeting. Second item we had was the procurement policy and procedures. That's a motion to adopt those procedures. We have talked about them for, I think, almost two years now on updating that, and so we finally come to fruition. Companion with that is update of Chapter two-fifty-two, which is the purchasing procedures. That is also on for first reading tonight. We look to pass that on second reading in two weeks. That's how it was voted out of the committee. We then talked about the different budget work sessions, as was a reminder earlier. There is going to be one on this Saturday morning at eight o'clock here in the council chambers. We did get some updates on the financials, on the, as far as the income tax. The income tax is up six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars ahead of last year, which was a record year. That's up three-point-eight percent as of November the first. We also have on a fee schedule, piece of legislation to increase the fees both at the pool and add a fee for body cameras from the police department. Those will go three full readings. We also have the hotel lodging tax that was brought forward by Mrs. Fenderbosh. That is also up for first reading. She will be sponsoring that. Also, the amendment to ordered twenty-five-thirteen Internet Auctions. We're adding another Internet auction site at the request of the Public Works Director. That also was requested to be a suspension of the rule. That's how it came out of the committee, so we're going to suspend the rule on that, basically because we want to get that going, add that auction site as soon as possible to, there's three other sites that we use, but the Public Works Direction wants us to move on that as quick as possible. The other issue that we did discuss was a letter with KUTAC Rock, an engagement letter. That's based on the TIF analysis that we had. The person that we are using on that has changed firm, so we have to have a new engagement letter, and that will also be a suspension of the rule so that we can move on that, as we had already discussions on that tonight with the public hearing. And our next meeting will be this Wednesday at six o'clock here in the council chambers. We're going to be sucking income tax.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zuber on any of the many topics he brought up? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We're going to go on now to Human Resources, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Human Resources met tonight at six o'clock. On the agenda first was the Human Resources Director Report. Couple highlights from that is that they're going to be resubmitting job ads for the engineer. And the, they're also going to be having interviews for the vector operator and the sign shop operator coming up in their future, and there's a position to be filled in engineering and engineering tech one. Some good news that came out of the Healthcare Committee is they're working on the dental and vision renewals, which will not be substantial in any stretch of the imagination coming up. It might be a dollar one way or the other, up or down for the vision. The health medical is on a two-year renewal, so that's not up for discussion at this time. There was the appointment, there's going to be a laborer, Nathan Castro, which is coming as a laborer. And we also discussed during our meeting the part-time deputy clerk job description, which we will, I'm taking to the CCM here today, so that you know about it. It's a job description for a part-time clerk, whose focus will be on Civil Service Commission, and it's something that's been talked about in the past, so it's starting to move forward, and we'll bring the job description to CCM and then to council. Additionally, in her report was that the next Community Relations Board meeting is scheduled for November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at four-thirty. We'll be hearing from Rob Ruah and Tom Carlton at that meeting, which will be in what I call the Engineer Conference Room, which I guess now is the first floor. Finally, with regard to Civil Service Commission updates, the firefighter paramedics, there were thirty candidates that applied. The exam will be November twelfth. And then there is also discussion in Civil Service about the lateral police exam, which has been scored, and Civil Service will be meeting next Monday for some other business, but before they do the other business, they will be meeting to certify the winning candidate. I'm happy to answer any questions. The next Human Resource meeting, if needed, will be December eighth at six o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions for Mr. Smith by my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go on to Mr. Cause with Public Safety and Health.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no formal report, but a reminder that the next meeting of the Public Safety and Health Committee will be on Tuesday, November the eighteenth, here in the council chambers at five-thirty PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cause? Seeing none, we're going to go on to Public Service, which is what I chair, and I wanted to share with everyone that our next meeting is going to be December the third, which is the last meeting of the month, for Public Service at five-thirty PM in these chambers. We have a number of items in front of us tonight. I'm just going to mention at this point in time those that have suspension of the rule and the reason for it. Twenty-five dash one-eight-one, this is a ordinance that is speaking to authorizing verdantists to provide environmental consultancy and services associated with the Ohio Brownfield Remediation Program, Phase Two Assessment Grant Application for the former NRG Power Plant property. And as you've heard tonight, there is a grant, and it's going to take them some time to prepare that grant application, and this is what this particular piece of legislation is for. It is, at a cost shall not exceed twenty-thousand dollars. It's going to be declared to be an emergency, the emergency being the necessity to fulfill the application by the deadline. Any questions from council on this one? Okay, the next one that's going to be suspension of the rule coming out of Public Service meeting is twenty-five dash one-eight-five. And one-eight-five is for Manic Smith. I know that residents have heard this name often, and they're involved in the work that is on Lake Road. And this has to do with the pedestrian improvement project on the western side, so it'd be from Route eighty-three going west. And because we're going to be putting in a pedestrian, new pedestrian light mechanism, the ODOT has decided that we need to comply with a new form, and that form is four-F. It's called environmental determination, and basically, the bottom line is, will that device prevent people from going to Miller Road Park? The answer is, no, it won't. It's just going to help them to travel across Lake Road safely. To perform that particular function, Manic and Smith, the amount is ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Most of this is going to be paid, ninety percent is going to be paid by ODOT, and our share is one-thousand-eighty-three dollars. Any questions on this one? Okay, we'll move on then to the next one. The next one we're going to have suspension of the rule on is twenty-five dash one-eight-five, which I just said. The last one is twenty-five dash one-eight-six. And this has been something we've been talking about for a long time, and it has to do with the outfall at Edgewood Drive. The residents on the far west end have been requesting this work for many, many years. Engineering designed it, they went out to bid, and it's determined that Great Lakes Demolition Company, LLC of Clyde, Ohio, is the lowest and best responsive bid after advertising accordance with law. And it's at the amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, and you're wondering, well, why are you doing suspension of the rule? Look at the weather outside. They want to finish it this year. If it goes into next year, they might not be able to get the work done because of their other load of work, so we're declaring it to be an emergency for the outfall on the shoreline of Lake Erie, and that's the reason why. Any questions on this item coming up? Okay, then we're going to go on now to planning. Mr. Smith, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commission met on November, Tuesday, November fourth, at their regular time on Election Day, and they had two items, both from Polte Homes, relative to the Harborcrest Townhouse subdivision where the preliminary, or the, I'm sorry, the improvement plans were approved on both subdivision one and on subdivision two. They are on our agenda for first reading. My intention to that is to discuss it further at our collective committee meeting, and unless there are any questions to suspend the rules on the second reading, as generally speaking, the improvement plans are approved by motion, and these are not, these are by ordinance, because there were some matters that remained that had to be taken care of before council could approve it regarding the engineers' comments. That's on your legislation, and one of them is subdivision one and one is subdivision two. So, subdivision two will be have to reference in that last piece of legislation. Other business that was taken care of at the Planning Commission meeting was an appointment of the Historic Preservation Commission representative, and Mrs. Raymond volunteered to do that. She'll be taking on those duties going forward. She's done a very nice job on Planning Commission from what I've seen, and I think she's a great representative to the Preservation Commission. They will be meeting again on December second, as far as I know, unless there's no items, but I think there's already talk that there is one. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one other item on, and that's the third reading tonight for the rezoning over on Moore Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Raymond, it's an architect. I think this would be of a wonderful use of her experience and her talents. Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Smith? All right, seeing none, we're going to go on to the zoning board. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December tenth, at seven PM here in the chambers.
Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Seeing none, we're going to go on to Mr. Shamir with Parks and Recreation.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Any other special committees? Ad hocs? Okay, the only one I have to report on is the Tree Commission. They've changed their regular day. This is just a special day because of conflicts within the calendar. Next time, they're going to be meeting at the Old Firehouse will be November the nineteenth at six PM. Okay, that is it. Any other special committees? Seeing none. We're going to move on now to our motions. First motion, Mr. Zuber.
I move to adopt the city's procurement policies and procedures.
In discussion?
We've had several years of discussion on this. I'm glad we're finally moving it before the end of the year. There's a companion piece, as I stated in my report, twenty-five-one-seventy-seven, which we're looking to suspend the rule on, and that's to update the codification of the changes.
Thank you. This is to be in compliance also with the State of Ohio. Thank you so much. Any further questions from anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Maron, the role?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, this is passed. Next one, Mr. Cause.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I read this motion, can I raise a point of order?
Yes, sir.
Should we add Mr. Arnold's motion to this to basically delay the third reading at the motion portion?
Sir, the way it's going to be, the way it's going to flow is that when it comes to his, instead of making... to his, instead of making the motion for passage, he's going to be putting the motion in at that point in time.
Okay. And Mr. Zubers as well, too?
Yes, that's, that's correct, sir. And I have gone, I've, I've worked with the law director on the procedures.
Okay.
In the process that the law director directed us on.
Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Zuber?
I have a question. I'm not going to move to remove my piece of legislation at the legislation portion.
At the time, what was with the law director and I discussed was at the time that you were coming to your, to that particular point, at that point, at the very beginning, you could, or you could wait till we discuss it, because it's the first reading. How do you want to do it? It's up to you.
Because I, I thought that usually when we get to legislation, you would ask if there's any additions or deletions. And that's when I, that's when I would intend to move to, to take that. And I would think that Mr. Arnold will do the same.
Okay, I'm going to check with the law director. Is that fine? Okay.
Fine, if they do it at that time, if they do it at that time.
He says that's fine. That's another option. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Arnold's got his hand up on that.
Mr. Arnold?
I would like to do that as well.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Cause, is you at the floor, sir?
Yeah, thank you very much. I move to instruct the Clerk of Council to return the form to the Division of Liquor Control in the matter of a liquor license name change from Lean Wu and Ling Lean Wu to Chun Wu LLC, three-two-seven-three-zero Walker Road, Avon Lake, indicating the city does not request a hearing.
In discussion?
Yes, in discussion. This is the location that folks here in Avon Lake know as Plum, the restaurant there in the landings. And anytime a liquor license name change takes place, it requires, it has the opportunity for the City of Avon Lake to request a hearing through the State Board. This has been, this name change has been reviewed by the Avon Lake Police Chief, and he does not have any concerns with this. And therefore, this motion is to instruct the Clerk of Council that the city is not requesting a hearing.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, this is passed. Now we're at legislation. This is the time for any additions or deletions. Do we have any additions? Mr. Zuber, your hand?
Yeah, I would move at this time to delete ordinance number twenty-five one-seventy-six.
So, so sir, first, we're going to add, we're going to add a motion to delete, okay? So the first thing we have to do is we have to add a motion to delete.
So moved.
Go ahead, sir.
I move to add a motion to delete ordinance number twenty-five one-seventy-six.
In discussion?
Based on discussions with you, and I think council had at the budget meeting, it was requested that this be removed.
Okay, any further discussion from anyone? Seeing none, this is a motion to delete ordinance twenty-five dash one-seven-six. Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to delete has passed. Thank you. Do we have another addition or deletion?
Yes, I have another deletion.
Mr. Arnold?
This is in regards to, I, I move to remove ordinance number twenty-five dash one-six-one.
Should we remove? Or I thought he was going to.
From the legislation tonight.
Okay. I thought you were going to postpone.
Well, what do you say it's postponing or removing it tonight, then it will, it can go on? I don't understand the difference.
There's, the parliamentarian, if you, if you totally remove it, okay, you have removed it. If you're going to postpone it, then you tell us the date that you're going to have it brought back. And you've already said in your committee that you're going to, you want, your intention is to postpone it to November the twenty-fourth, right, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. So then the motion would be to, I have to find the, the number, where is it?
How about?
Twenty-five dash one-six-one, to postpone it to November the twenty-fourth.
I move to postpone the vote of ordinance number twenty-five dash one-six-one until the next council meeting on November twenty-fourth.
Thank you. And that was in discussion. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. That, too, has passed. Any more additions or deletions? Okay, seeing none, then we're going to move on. We're now in legislation. We're at third reading, and we have a resolution, twenty-five dash one-six-two. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
A resolution adopting the Avon Lake Community Television Rules and Regulations.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes, I move for the passage of resolution number twenty-five dash one-six-two, a resolution adopting the rules and regulations governing ALCTV.
And in discussion, sir?
This effectively is, is formalization of existing rules and updating of previous rules and regulations that were in place.
Well done. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Ordinance number twenty-five dash one-six-six, Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance to rezone permanent parcel number zero-four-zero-zero-zero-six-one-three-five-zero-seven-one from B dash two General Business District to a R dash one A Single Family Residence District and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move this to the third reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash one-six-six.
So you move for passage?
I thought I did. I move for passage.
Thank you. And in discussion?
Thank you. This is the property we've discussed for the last several meetings on Moore Road, on the west side of Moore Road, across the street from Drug Mart. They're going to be putting in four single-family lots there, all with hundred-foot frontages. And I got nothing else to add to that.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Now we're at second readings. Second readings, ordinance number twenty-five dash one-six-seven. Mr. Arnold?
I, I move for.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Val, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, yes. Ordinance number twenty-five dash one-six-seven, Mrs. Rossmarin, by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Avon Lake and Avon Lake Environmental Redevelopment Group LLC for the acquisition of approximately twenty-three acres of land located in the City of Avon Lake and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Arnold, it's now yours.
Thank you. This is the second reading on this ordinance. Again, this is for the purchase of twenty-three acres of lakefront land of the former power plant. It's been over a year since the original interim development agreement was in place. This is the next step. It'll be purchased through a TIF for fifteen million dollars. The TIF has to be approved by the school district. And then Steve Groves from Verdantis was here last week to go through the environmental component to it, to talk about the different aspects of that. And talked about how the city can walk away from any, any point in time if something comes up, or we're not happy with the environmental component. Todd Davis spoke earlier today. He's here in the audience today. Next week, we'll also talk about the TIF aspect of it. Majid Magluus will be here to talk about that at the next CCM. I don't know if the mayor has anything to add to this.
Mr. Mayor?
No, I think that pretty well covers it. Our, our outside counsel, Todd Davis, is here. If anybody has any questions, we can certainly refer to him.
Okay, thank you. The comment that I have to make is, is that by passing this now, we will be able to have Verdantis finish Phase One environmental and actually go through by environmental two. And Phase Two, with additional wells that they're digging, they'll be able to identify what's there and also identify the way to remediate it. And what's beautiful about it is by passing it now, the expense of having that done is paid for by Chara, ALERG. Is there anything else anybody else would like to say? Mr. Shamir?
Excuse me, may I get the overhead, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay.
First of all, I, I want to thank Mr. Davis for last week bringing up the issues that were discussed. The two cases of Dublin came off of Google. I unfortunately don't have the privilege of having seven hundred dollar an hour lawyers at my disposal, so I utilize whatever that's out there. So I, I just want to clear that up. And the issue that I'd like to discuss is fundamentally the parkland, the submerged land lease, and the beach area, and the feasibility of this project. So one of the things that we talk about is the parkland, and that's the green area. The next component is a beach area, which effectively in this schematic is defined as the area outlined here, which is about three hundred and fifty yards, three hundred yards depending. And I have to say, I, I, I kind of took a few pieces of information off Mr. Zuber's Facebook page, because I haven't had the chance to go on, onto site yet. And I'd like to thank him and not to be caught in plagiarizing anything. So I just want to give him the information. That's where I got it from. So if, if we look at a number of pictures that he has taken, this is the area of Powder Maker Creek coming out and going into the lake. These are sediments that have been there and collected. In fact, we've, we've shown pictures of this from previous activities that have gone on. But I'm going to go back and make a comment. Thank you, Chara, for a tour of Avon Lake's future beautiful beaches. And I think that is a great thing. I think having beautiful beaches is a very, very central aspect of what the community would like. So that area of discussion is effectively here. That's, that's the photo. This is the discharge point from Powder Maker Creek. Now, in this environmental work that is being done, there is no activity, environmental activity or data collection in the submerged land lease area. So no sediment collection, no information on what is out there environmentally going to be collected at this stage. Okay? This is another photo, again, a lovely photo. This is looking from Miller Road Park towards the power plant area. And this is part of the city's beach, which right now is, as, as you can see by the photos taken by Mr. Zuber, shows sand, because the water was lower. And if you want to look at with respect to what the schematic that has been presented to the city of the conceptual of what this is going to look like, this is the dot pointing in the direction of the, the smokestack. There is another photo of the same thing from here, looking out. Now, none of this sediment, sand, and anything below it is planned to be sampled as a part of this program. So the environmental activity is solely focused on, let's say, the green area, not the beach. Yet, we talk about the residents wanting access to the lake, to a park, and to beach. These are centric to what has been sold to the community today. And I think it's a wonderful, wonderful idea. But we need to look at what is actually a viable option. Now, if you look at this, this is that same area that's highlighted as, as beach area. And if you go all the way to the Avon Lake City Beach, which has been out of, out of use for about five years now, that area contiguous is about five hundred and eighty-five yards. So the photo that you saw previously was taken from here, pointing towards the pier at Miller Road Park. Now, if I go back, this area, if you see, there is a yellow dotted line. This one stops roughly at the border, and that's about three hundred and ninety-five Now, if you look, this one comes and stops here. That's three hundred yards. So that's three hundred yards of beach potential, not including what's in the city and in the gap in between. So what I'd like to discuss is what is it going to cost to make that beach usable by residents? What does usable mean? Having a beach that cannot be used because of environmental conditions is not what the community wants. They want a beach that is usable. Now, here is a view from this point, looking towards a pier within the power plant. Now, we discussed what the concept is. Avon Lake Power Plant Redevelopment, twenty-three-point-two-two acres of parkland, lakefront, green space to be purchased via, via mechanism of a TIF for fifteen million dollars, which would be funded for a thirty-year period. The total TIF value is sixty million. And then there's a discussion of another fifteen to be used for regrading, capping, and there's also a potential of the remainder of that sixty million dollars to also be utilized for remediation. The question that I've got fundamentally, and, and this is something that I will be asking next week, again, is have we done, excuse me, this thing jumps, have we done a feasibility study of what it's going to cost to bring the beach to a state where it can be utilized by the community? What is it going to cost? Is it going to cost a million dollars? Is it going to cost five million dollars? Is it going to cost fifteen million dollars? Or is it going to cost even more to come and bring that beach to a usable state? The importance of this is, is the long-term strategy. If we buy the land with the concept of we're going to utilize a beach, and we don't know what the cost of getting a beach is going to be, and there's two components to that cost. One is to clean that beach up and ensure that that beach remains clean. And the second component is the operation and maintenance associated with upkeep of that beach. Now, why is that important? If you look at just down, and I'm going to go back, if you look at the area down here where the city has a beach, roughly about a hundred yards or so, that beach is gone. And the reason we don't have a beach is because there is no funds to maintain that beach. Now, here, there's a difference on this side. The environmental impact has to be looked at, and we need to look at what the cost of maintaining that beach is going to be over the life. It's not one year, it's not two years, it's for the life of that beach. So not only does it have to clean up, it has to also be maintained. Now, what does a feasibility? Now, what does a feasibility study do? We need to understand what the engineering cost, what the environmental cost, and what the cleanup cost, and what the maintenance cost is. And you look at the feasibility. So you define practical cost ranges. And this is not something that you need to do with future data. You can actually do a desktop order of magnitude feasibility to come up with costs associated with cleaning up, getting it to a point where the risk of use of that beach is reduced, and what it would take then to maintain it over the life of that beach. Approach, you've got US EPA, you've got Army Corps of Engineer, and you have the Great Lakes Legacy Act case studies, which you can utilize to come up with an order of magnitude cost. That's a desktop feasibility study of what it would cost. Why would we want to do that? We wanna support shoreline stabilization, beach feasibility, and that feasibility, again, is engineering, environmental, and construction and operation and maintenance, and the fiscal obligation that we would have to bring that beach to a usable standard. Now, again, what will it take? There are many different ways, but isolation and making an area which is totally isolated from the rest of the contaminants that could be onshore. Because remember, there is maybe hotspot remediation onshore, but the concept is also to do capping. So when you cap, when you lay a cap on top of the park area, the mindset is we want to isolate and reduce the risk based on contact. So you're, you're putting a cap on, you're gonna maintain that cap, and you understand that there is contamination in the subsurface that could migrate into the beach area. So in order to, to make sure that that beach area is safe and to be utilized, you need to do capping in that area, or you have to clean it up, or you have to maintain it. That is a mechanism that could be utilized to safeguard the beach and allow it to be utilized by the community. But what does it cost? What is the cost of doing this? Okay? There are components, and I will forward this. I literally finished with it as I was, just before I came in. So I'll give it to all of council. You can forward it to Mr. Davis and Mr. Gross. But you want to isolate the transition zone. You want to isolate what is underwater. You also have to dredge and dispose because that's the only way you're gonna be able to remove what is out there. Then you're gonna have to put either slurry wall or a sheet pile. So it is marine controls, it is investigation and design, and then there is monitoring and operation and maintenance. These are key elements that are going to be playing into what it's gonna cost us. So when you look at it for a beach, again, back of envelope calculation, something that is used to understand order of magnitude for a three hundred yard beach to be cleaned and utilized based on data from EPA, Corps of Engineers, Great Lakes Legacy Act, and based on a transition zone of thirty feet, sub-accurate cap of a hundred and fifty feet wide, target dredging of five thousand to fifteen thousand cubic yards. So roughly, you go through, all of this data comes from the sources that I mentioned. And when you look at indicative total cost, if you're doing a lean build, that's, that's the bare minimum. You're looking somewhere between six and nine million dollars. And if you're doing a conservative build, you're looking somewhere between thirteen and sixteen million dollars for that three hundred yard beach area. The sources that were used are identified down there. But when you are committing to go down a path of a PSA and you don't have a feasibility study that tells you what it is that you're going to have down the road is problematic. You can't go down the road and make an assessment based on no data. At least having an order of magnitude data, you understand what that obligation is. So what I'm gonna tell you is, we have a concept of fifteen million dollars for park acquisition, another fifteen for site regrading and potential remediation through caps. We have another thirty million dollars left. If we wanna go back and look at the range, we're somewhere between nine and thirteen million dollars, five, six million and sixteen million dollars, and additional fees to get the beach up and ready for residents to use. So where are we gonna get the money? Right now, we have had a beach that's been closed for years, at least for as long as I've been here, and we can't maintain it. We don't have the funds. And we want to give the community access to a beach from what, what revenue source, from what funding. And if we utilize forty-five million out of that TIF fund to do environmental remediation, purchase of land and regrading, that's gonna leave maybe fifteen million dollars to do infrastructure development? How are we going to develop infrastructure to bring in additional vehicle capacity, additional, additional resident capacity into that area? It's not that it's not possible, it's very much possible. But in order to do things like this, you can't go based on faith. You have to look at the data. And a feasibility study is the initial phase before you make that decision. And this is the issue that I have been talking about. Because if you don't isolate the area, you can't let people go into that water. I mean, if you're going to cap the area, you have an investigator. It could be clean, but investigation is not part of this phase of study. So you want to commit to purchase-sale agreement now without understanding what is in the water or what sediment's conditions are underwater and within the area where it's going to be a beach. Goes back. We have limited funds, limited resources. So again, what we need to do is evaluate the submerged land lease and beach feasibility before signing the PSA. This is the key. I am not saying that this is undoable. I am saying that we need to be clear in what we're doing. I will love to sit down with Mr. Gross, with Mr. Davis, go through and understand how and what is going to allow the city to build a beach and how it's going to be risk-free to the residents who are going to utilize it. So that is what I have here. Thank you very much. And I will forward this to all of council momentarily.
Appreciate it, thank you. Anyone else on council before I go out to our consultants? Yes, Mr. Zuber?
Yeah, I have a couple things. I think the reason that beach is not open at this point is because it's just become a beach. And I think maybe when the water comes back from where it was pushed eastward, we may not have a beach. So that's why it hasn't been open. But people have been swimming down there for years and years and years and years. I guess that's probably why I don't have any air, because I spent some time swimming there. But I think, and there's a lot of assumptions. I mean, if you go back to your one slide.
I will love to.
Yeah.
Which one?
The one that's entitled "Assumptions."
Go back up higher.
Right there. Oh, passed it.
Passed it.
Right. We don't want people make assumptions. And I, and I, that's all I have to say. I have some other things I wanna talk about, about the power plant site itself. Lead-contaminated dust removal. They removed two hundred and fifty-six thousand pounds of lead contamination. Asbestos removal. Five point four million pounds of asbestos were removed from that plant. Oil, a hundred and forty thousand gallons. Petroleum removal, nineteen thousand, over nineteen thousand gallons. Fly ash removal, forty, over forty-six hundred tons. Ammonia removal, one thousand one hundred and fifty-five gallons of ammonia. Sulfuric acid, sixty-six hundred pounds. Arsenic-impacted soil, a hundred and ninety-eight tons. This has all been removed from that site by ALERG. And that's something that we have not talked about enough, is the cleanup. The cleanup that was done in Avon Lake by ALERG. Five point four million pounds of asbestos was removed from that plant. We don't talk about that enough. We don't talk about it enough about what was done at that plant and what has been removed. And this is data, this was a, something that, that I kept that shows that Environmental Redevelopment Group, this was their September twenty-twenty-four update. So since then, God only knows how much more has been removed. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else before I go out? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
Just in response, assumptions are sometimes the only thing that we have in lieu of strategy. So if you lay out a strategy, you don't need to make assumptions, Mr. Zuber. That is fundamental. You could lay down as me and die thinking and waiting for a strategy to show up, or you could make an assumption based on what is presented. What is presented in the three hundred yards comes off of the documentation that has been presented to the city by ALERG. So the concept of three hundred yards on assumptions is based on what has been presented. Now, when it comes to all the data that you presented to include asbestos, Mr. Zuber, no one, no one has challenged the work that's been done on top of ground. What's been done at the surface and above, they've done a great job. No one has made a comment that they have not. But that is the easy work. What is underground is a whole different approach and different type of work. So this is something that I've done for a very long time, Mr. Zuber. I have never questioned what they've done from zero up. It's always zero down. So let me be clear. We also, we also know that for forty-five days, they tried to stop mercury exceedance, and they couldn't. So they stopped discharging through Pond 002 into the lake. After that, no one knows what happened to the liquid. Their emergency disposal route based on NRG diagrams was into Powdermaker Creek. So let me be clear. That for seven months, no one knew what happened to whatever liquid that came out of the coal yard and where it ended up. That's not assumption, that is clear, clear data. The other thing that we know, never, ever did we see a root cause analysis of what happened. Root cause analysis? We just had a root cause analysis based on a spill that was, that occurred at Lubrison. They submitted the root cause analysis, they have put in engineering controls. You know what we got? We got zero. We asked for root cause analysis, nothing. So I will challenge your statements because what you say is about the easy work. It's picking up the easy fruits of the tree, not the difficult. Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Koz. I saw your hand up earlier. Mr. Zuber, your hands up, sir.
Just that, I was just going, it had nothing to do with your presentation, Mr. Shamir. I was just going through all the things that have been removed from that site. And the only comment I'll make is, is what happens when we assume? And we all know what happens, all you have to do is spell out the word.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Koz, your hand, yes, Mr. Shamir? And then we're going to move on.
You know, Mr. Zuber, assuming unless you have a strategy, then show me a way. We can't sit on our hands. Sitting on your hand is worse than the words that you put together through assumption.
Okay, sir, we're gonna move on to Mr. Koz.
Okay, thank you. So just a couple things. One thing to Mr. Shamir's presentation in the comments with the Miller Road Beach. One thing I will push back on is the beach isn't there because the city didn't have the funds to maintain it. The beach evaporated about seven, eight years ago, whatever it was. When the water came up, it came in and basically swallowed the beach. And it's just now beginning to reappear. But for years, that water came right up to the shoreline. So that, that's one thing. But that's neither here nor there. The, a couple of other things. During the conversa- comments this, earlier this evening, one of the residents came up and mentioned the fifteen-dollar purchase price, fifteen-million-dollar purchase price for the property and stated that that was too much for that piece of property. We do have the appraisal, which I brought up here, which we all received the appraisal for this. And this is the appraisal that broke this down by town homeland, by, by doing the parcels as town homeland, multifamily land, commercial land, lakefront recreational land. And the appraisal that came out was twenty-eight million, seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. So roughly thirty million dollars. And if you look at, we're acquiring more than fifty percent of it. At fifteen million dollars, it's in alignment. It's, it's, it's may not be exact, but it's, it's right in alignment. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that there was an appraisal done on this and that the, the purchase price for fifteen is in alignment with that. And then the final comment that I do wanna make additionally is the, the Avon Lake Comprehensive Plan, which not everyone may be aware of. But back in two thousand and nineteen, the city commissioned a study, the Avon Lake Comprehensive Plan. And I'm not gonna bore anybody with all of the details on it. But there were six main pieces of plan goals that came out of this with comprehensive studies that came out of this. The number-one plan goals for the city of Avon Lake when this study was done a few years ago was improved lakefront access. And I'll just read this section real quick. Improved lakes front access, which was number one. Identify and establish new points of access to the lakefront through public green spaces where residents can interact with Lake Erie. Then we had number two, number three, and then number four out of the six was create new parks and open spaces. Look for opportunities to create or expand parks and open spaces which encourage community and social gatherings and events. Too often, we get accused, and many times rightfully so, that we commission these studies and we don't always follow through as we should with, with the recommendations and findings of the studies. Here is a study that was commissioned, here is a study that was put together, and by acquiring this piece of property, we are taking care of number one and number four on that of these goals. So I think that that's important, that we're responding to what the study found as far as the city. And I guess the final thing is, Mr. Shamir and I are gonna go walk the power plant site tomorrow. Hopefully, it's not as cold and as miserable as it is today. But I know that our original date that we had scheduled, Mr. Gross was gonna go there with us, and unfortunately, he could not. But he did express to me that he wants to walk that with you. I would encourage you guys to do that, to get out there and walk that. Because you raised some good points about the submerged land lease, and I think that having our, our consultant on the spot would actually be beneficial. So I would encourage you to get a second walk-through with Mr. Gross.
Thank you. Anybody else up here? Mr. Mayor, your hands up?
Yeah, a couple things. To the closure of the beach, he's correct. We had a high watermark, there was no beach. It was also closed because we had drownings there. The drownings were due to the turbulence of the water release from the power plant itself, which obviously has stopped. Mr. Shamir, when you go there, you're gonna see that actually the point where the water would exhaust out of the plant is now a sandbar. There is no eight-to-ten-foot water there anymore. It's quite the site. To the mercury release that you discussed, that was actually determined come from a sump on the plant site, not the coal yard. The discharge that you had shown going back a year or so was actually the The, uh, discharge that you had shown, uh, going back a year or so was actually the stormwater, uh, from Avondale. It is not connected to the, um, directly connected to the coal yard area. And I also want to remind everybody that that low level mercury release, um, the concentration was actually less than what is allowable in our drinking water. Um, the comprehensive plan, uh, I know that Ted had looked at that, uh, relative to our desire to have that. And I believe, uh, you indicated there were, uh, many comments that the top comment was public access to the lake, correct? So just, I want to do that before we turn it over to Mr. Davis to maybe, uh, talk about some of the issues that were brought up.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, would you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Davis, you have to give us a moment. Mr. Smith, thank you.
Yeah, the one thing that I'm starting to get a little bit concerned about is, uh, the zoning and what we're gonna allow there. Uh, if in fact we go through with the purchase, uh, or if we do zoning otherwise. They're wanting to start selling some properties off, I do believe, based on what I've seen in the, the, the net, the loop net. And, uh, I think we ought to start really trying to get our zoning in order so that we know what we're gonna allow there and what we're not gonna allow there and how it's gonna all intertwine.
Right, it's a good point. And so next week at the, um, the TIF meeting, Mr. uh, Majid will also be here. My understanding is he's going to be addressing that. So I, I think we're gonna have a lot of clarity. There's so much, this is like peeling an onion. This is why the administration and our consultants recommended, and I agreed to, I thought it was a good practice, to divide it into different spaces so that last week, we would really, really work on the environmental. And then, um, at the next CCM, we would really, really concentrate on the TIF and the zoning. Mr. Davis, would you like to come up forward and you can, um, respond to what has been said and also take us through the process plan for what is beyond what we're looking at right now?
Sure, happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Councilman Shamir, I certainly appreciated many of the points that you raised, uh, in the recent presentation. As always, there was a lot, uh, in the presentation and certainly, uh, I'd like to have a, an opportunity to go back and kind of go through that presentation in detail and be able to provide, uh, a response. But I did wanna address a number of some of the initial points. As we talked about in the first presentation last week, when, uh, when Steve Gross was here, talking about environmental issues, we specifically mentioned that we plan to sample sediment. We plan to sample sediment. We, we, we've actually, we're in the process of applying for a grant, uh, to sample the sediment. I've raised that question and that issue, uh, with ALERG as well. Uh, and basically told them point blank, uh, that we need to make sure that, that the area where the planned beach is going to be and the water and the sediment in the water that, that may be an exposure pathway to people recreating in Lake Erie has to be addressed. So that, that's something that's been raised and it's something that we've noted and something that, you know, we addressed last week. And, uh, I'll tell you that we'll, we plan to address it prospectively with respect to the submerged land lease. In approaching this transaction, we knew that we needed to phase our approach to this project. And that's why we acknowledged that we'll do a, a next phase, the evaluation of the submerged land lease. That's something that we're gonna have to coordinate with ODNR, Ohio EPA. There are many stakeholders in that process that we'll have to, we'll have to include. I agree, I certainly agree that, that we need a park design. As I mentioned last week, one of the things that we're gonna do, you gotta start with the first part, especially when we've got limited funding in connection with the due diligence and the acquisition yet. We need to start with signing a, a, a purchase and sale agreement. That, as I said last week, that's the kickoff, that's the start of the process. Until we have a purchase and sale agreement, there's really no reason to go forward and look at the submerged land lease because if we don't start with the first phase, we're not gonna get to the second phase. So with all due respect, it's a matter of timing and phasing. You can't do everything at once. And that's how we've chosen to bifurcate the process. We've applied for grants and will be applying for additional grant funding. You mentioned the Great Lakes Restoration Act. There's, there's a lot of funding, uh, that can be utilized and tapped into, uh, with respect to that opportunity. With respect to the design. And I appreciated the, the breadth of the beach that you showed. But a couple of points with respect to that. Number one, much of that area may be up beneath the ordinary high watermark associated with the property. And it's not even property that ALERG controls. And it's not property that's subject to the submerged land lease. So we're dealing with totally different parties in the state of Ohio as we do those evaluations. Those are things we're gonna need to address. I don't know that we're gonna have a three hundred yard beach. Cost and feasibility is undoubtedly a question. Uh, I, I completely agree with you on that point. I did a project that involved, it was literally the largest shoreline erosion and reclamation project on Lake Erie over three years, one point two miles of shoreline reclamation, following exactly what you showed, uh, in connection with those improvements. So I'm very familiar with the process because I, I've lived it for, for many years. So I, I understand what's involved in that process. And again, another reason why we decided to bifurcate that issue from the existing, uh, issue before us. So if we think about all of the problems that may come up in the future and are paralyzed by, by those things, I know you like to call those, uh, lack of strategy. That's not what it is. We have a strategy, it's a phased strategy. And we gotta, we have to take projects like this, uh, as the council president, uh, described. It's an onion that you've gotta peel and you've gotta peel back all the issues. I totally agree that you've got to investigate it and we will. Yep, I have no idea what it's gonna cost for the beach. You, you, you went to kind of back of the envelope, rule of thumb figures. But it, I think you'll have to acknowledge that it's all based on what the design is. I, I don't know that you're gonna, I, I have no idea what the future design of that beach is gonna be. That's the next phase. It's gonna involve a lot of input from the community. It's gonna involve a lot of input from council and many other stakeholders. And we'll back into what the project can afford. And it may be an absolutely amazing opportunity to do a wonderful beach, but it's not three hundred, uh, yards. Especially in property that we can't acquire, manage, or control. So anticipating what the future costs could be associated with O and M, it may be a fraction of that. And, and I'm sure that the community will take a look at that and do a project that the community can afford. Um, but certainly those will be next steps associated with this project. So, uh, you know, I, I think that those were the, the main points that I wanted to, uh, to address. Just in summation, we're gonna do due diligence. We've said we're gonna do due diligence in connection with, uh, the area in the lake. We've already applied for grants associated with that process. The, the Brownfield Grant that we're going to apply for now, one of the elements that we've discussed about that potential grant is to work with, uh, with Ohio EPA and the Economic Development, uh, Authority to dedicate a portion of, of those funds to address some of those concerns as well. So we're not ignoring this issue. We're phasing this in a way that makes sense for this transaction.
And we're doing transparency. And I think that's what's important for the public. This might be, it might seem like we're just dragging it out. But also, this is the way, we're not dragging it out. By doing it in phases, we're bringing the public into it and they're seeing exactly the steps that are taking place. Thank you. Any further discussion down here on my left, to my right? Thank you, sir. Mr. Zuber, is there anything else that you wanted to add to that? We're, we're good? Yes, sir.
To Mr. Davis, I, Mr. Mayor made a comment about the, if I may get the overhead.
Oh, I'm sorry, you need power.
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor made a mention that the pond and the emergency issue with the pond does not go into Powdermaker Creek. Well, this is the schematic, this is the coal pile retention basin. And as you could see, in emergency conditions, the discharge into, is into Powdermaker Creek. This is NRG's documentation and how they have set up everything. So it did go into Powdermaker Creek. And we have never seen the results of ALERGs if they've done a root cause analysis. And furthermore, they were in violation of their NPDS permit. Let's be clear. They were in violation of their NPDS permit and they could not control it. They tried for forty-five days. So they were cited for a violation. And I just need that to be clarified. Thank you.
If I may.
Please go ahead then, I'll, I'll respond.
From that perspective, just to respond. And I, and I, I recognize that that was not addressed to me, but I think I'm in a position to address some of those questions. There are literally millions of violations like that. If you look at a permit that go on in the state of Ohio, millions that occur every year. There's a system of, of upsets and NPDS violations. It's all public information. Everyone who's got a permit has to sample and test. And sometimes there's upsets for different reasons and they're reported. This, in this case, I know it was reported to Ohio EPA. Ohio EPA said it was de minimis, there was no regulatory action to be taken. When you're doing a project of this nature, you're undoubtedly going to have some issues that come up that have to be managed. This was one of those issues. It, it's a de minimis issue that I've heard multiple times in discussion. And I think it's completely irrelevant. Not something that the city should be concerned about whatsoever. And given the complexity of this site, the fact that it's been disclosed to EPA, EPA decided to take absolutely no action. I think it's, it's, it's a moot point.
Thank you, sir. I'm Mr. Mayor.
My point was, uh, there was a video shown of a outfall into Powdermaker Creek. And that outfall itself was not connected to the coal pile. The outfall for what you're describing is farther upstream. And it was also determined by ALERG that the release came from the sump in the power plant, went into OO two, and that it was not from the coal yard pile. That's all I was referring to. Thank you.
On the north side of Lake Grove.
The north side of Lake Grove, yes, sir.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes. Well, I would like to make the comment that ALERG had the violation and they never, and the transparency and the relationship between ALERG and the city never reported it to the city. It was only, only reported through the Environmental Affairs Advisory Board. And then the comment was made that it was a single event. Yet, when we looked at it, it occurred for forty-five days and they could not control it. And furthermore, yes, it might be a slug, but slugs go away. Slugs deplete. When the source is much more major, there's an extension of that release. So I still would love to see that root cause analysis. It's been almost two years and five months. I still haven't seen it. I would love to see it if you've got it. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, Mr. Arnold, you're the sponsor of this particular ordinance. Is there anything else that you wanted to say to close this discussion out?
No.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna now move on to ordinance number twenty-five dash one six nine. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance creating the Sand Ridge and Harbor Crest Tax Increment Finance and Incentive Districts, declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes. Establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, authorizing school compensation payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive districts, district, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Arnold?
Thank you. Uh, this is the second reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash one six nine. We did have a, uh, public hearing on this topic earlier tonight. This is in regards to the two new developments, Sand Ridge and Harbor Crest developments. Uh, this is not like the TIF that we talked about previously. Uh, the schools would re- excuse me, would remain, uh, to get funded. The Rain County JVS would be, remain to get funded by any, any increase in taxes as these two developments go up. Basically, we would receive the funds from the county and the city that the city would normally get. We would keep those funds and it would be, those funds would only be used on that section of those properties. So Route eighty-three and Walker Road, any of the connections, um, any road improvements or of those sort. We actually have a list, um, that would include, uh, Mr. Cause. We did add in the, um, excuse me, the crosswalks, the, the electric crosswalks, is that what we talked about? And just so I understand this correctly, um, so we don't want to have third reading on this until December fifteenth?
That's correct.
Okay. We've got plenty of time to discuss this, if anyone had any questions.
Any further discussion from our colleagues? Okay, thank you so much, sir. Uh, we're gonna move along now to ordinance number twenty-five dash one seven four. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance enacted in a code of ordinances for the city of Avon Lake, Ohio, revising, amending, restating, codifying, and compiling certain existing general ordinances for the city of Avon Lake, Ohio, dealing with subjects embraced in such code of ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Um, in two weeks, we're gonna be bringing the book in so that the residents can see how, how large the book is that, um, Mrs. Rossmarin has been, has been working with to prepare it to this point, along with our law director. Um, this code of ordinances is, is a general ordinances of the city of Avon Lake. Um, they're revised, they're amended, they're restated, they're codified. And by code, we need to go through it, um, to keep it up to date. It has the administrative code, traffic code, general offenses code, business regulation, taxation code, streets utilities, public services code, planning and zoning code, building and housing, fire prevention code. And there's special ordinances that are also included in it. Um, the reason that it's declared to be an emergency is that by the time that we pass it and then the code has to go back to, um, American legal, we need to have it finished before the end of the year. And so this is something that's used on a daily operation of the city and it's for the immediate preservation of our health, safety, and welfare as citizens of Avon Lake. And this is the reason why, um, it's not gonna be suspension of the rule, but it's gonna be emergency passage. Any further discussion on this particular one from anyone? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move along then to first readings. Um, ordinance number twenty-five dash one seven five. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance section two zero eight point zero one entitled Fee Schedule.
Mr. Zuber?
I moved the, uh, first reading of ordinance twenty-five one seventy-five.
And in discussion, sir?
Uh, this was voted out of the Finance Committee. This creates a, um, new section for the Police Department on the, uh, copying of, uh, videos, recordings for the Police Department. And, uh, the, the cost would be seventy-five dollars, uh, and not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars, plus the five dollars for a flash drive. This is for their body cameras and, uh, other videos that, uh, the Police Department does. And it also increases the fee for the pool, both in twenty, twenty-two, twenty-six and twenty-two, twenty-seven. Uh, those fees will be going up twelve percent each of those years. And we need to pass the ordinances in, in order to, uh, codify those increases.
Thank you. This is the first reading and there's gonna be three readings. And I see your hand, Mr. Cause. And I see your hand, Mr. Cos.
Yeah, just wanna note that what Mr. Zuber mentioned, the seventy-five dollars per hour and not to exceed seven fifty total, those numbers came from the state of Ohio. Those are from the state of Ohio ordinances that we're copying. Thanks.
Good put, good input. Also, there's gonna be additional items added at the CCM. Again, I'm gonna remind all council members, any of your boards and commissions and your committees, if you need to add anything, subtract anything, please have it to Mrs. Rossmarin for the CCM. I know we're gonna have some things through public service. Mr. Viskovitz, you've asked us to remove the green team and we didn't need to bring it up to date. So, by the time we come back to you in two weeks, there should be an update. Anything further on this? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on now to ordinance number twenty-five dash one seven seven. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance chapter two fifty-two entitled Purchasing Procedures.
Mr. Zuber.
I move the first reading of ordinance number twenty-five one seventy-seven.
Thank you. In discussion, sir?
This codifies some of the purchasing procedures. The biggest change is that between fifty thousand and now seventy-seven thousand, that's the, set by the state, the maximum, will no longer have to go to bid. They will have to get three quotes. This is based on the state law that we have adopted. However, they will have to get three quotes and there will have to be some type of council action taken either in a council committee, at a collective committee meeting, or at a regular council meeting. And this is to hopefully move forward and get things done a little bit quicker, especially at the Public Works Department.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone?
Just that I'll be passing this on second reading in two weeks.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to ordinance number twenty-five dash one seven eight. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance establishing a lodging exercise tax on hotels and short-term rentals within the city of Avon Lake.
Oh, just a moment, please. Mr. Arnold?
We removed this one.
This one was not removed.
I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're gonna start over again. Mrs. Rossmarin, please.
An ordinance establishing a lodging excise tax on hotels and short-term rentals within the city of Avon Lake, providing for tax collection and remittance by lodging platforms and operators, and declaring an emergency.
Yes, I'm the sponsor of this one. Thank you, Mr. Zuber. According to Ohio Revised Code, Sections five seven three nine point oh eight and five seven three nine point oh nine one, municipalities can levy an excise tax on transactions at lodging and hotels for transit gas. The transit gas, it describes it as thirty days or less staying somewhere. And the fee that we can collect is one that needs to be utilized once we collect it in two different areas. One is paid monthly by the platform that will be making the reservation. And the fee used, half of it, fifty percent, would go toward tourism, recreation, visitor related services, and the remainder of it goes into the general fund. And there's a mechanism that is already established for eighty-eight other communities as to how this would occur. Any further discussion? I tend to have this be three readings. Thank you. We'll go on to the next one, resolution number twenty-five dash one seven nine.
A resolution amending resolution number twenty-five dash thirteen, authorizing the Finance Director to dispose of certain surplus city property no longer needed for public use by internet auction from February first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber.
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of resolution twenty-five one seventy-nine.
In discussion, sir?
This adds to the city's disposal in internet auction sites, PurpleWave.com. The others are GovDeals, PropertyRoom.com, and PublicSurplus.com. This adds that so that we could dispose of unusable property by the city of Avon Lake.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Viskovitz, anything that you wanted to add to this?
Other than it's, obviously it's a newer platform for the city, but in speaking with some other communities that use them, it's been able to streamline their processes for liquidation. So, it's a win-win for the community to be able to utilize them.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
This is passed. Thank you. Ordinance number twenty-five dash one eight zero. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a personal services agreement with Russ Balthus Esquire of Kootok Rock LLP Legal Services for Legal Services, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five one eight zero.
In discussion, sir?
This one came out of the Finance Committee. This is for legal services for our TIF attorney. And this is a contract not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Correct. And this TIF is for a specific area? It's not for the power plant?
Yeah, this is for.
Sandwich.
The TIF area that we had talked about in the public hearing tonight.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Ordinance number twenty-five dash one eight one. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Verdantis LLC for the Ohio Brownfield Remediation Program Phase Two Assessment Grant Application for the former NRG Power Plant Property, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of council's rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash one eight one. And in discussion, Verdantis of Dublin, Ohio, has been, if this passes, they're authorized to provide environmental consultation services with the Ohio Brownfield Remediation Program Phase Two Assessment Grant Application for the former NRG plant. And by performing these services, their services shall not exceed twenty thousand dollars. And the reason it is declared to be an emergency is that they have a very short period of time to prepare that grant with the application deadline coming up in early December. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I'm looking at the agenda, are you planning on asking for suspension of the rules on the next item, ordinance twenty-five dash one eighty-two?
No, sir.
Okay, why not?
Okay, the reason that this, well, let me go back. These work side by side, and this one, we're doing suspension of the rules so that they can immediately get busy in preparing the grant. The next one is the grant and it's not due until the first week of December. So, we can still go to a second reading on the twenty-fourth. If we put this one off for a second reading, they won't have enough time to put the grant together. Okay? Any further discussion, sir?
It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, I mean, we could get the business done, but that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, ordinance number twenty-five dash one eight two. Please read by title only.
A resolution authorizing the city of Avon Lake to apply for and administer a State of Ohio Brownfield Remediation Program Assessment Grant for the former NRG Power Plant Property, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading. My intention is to take it to two readings as was just discussed. The State of Ohio Department of Development provides financial assistance to local governments and their project partners for the purpose of addressing local needs. The city desires to serve as a public sponsor for the assessments of the former NRG Power Plant Property under the Ohio Brownfield Remediation Program Assessment Grant. Locally, it's just referred to as the remediation Brownfield Grant. The city has the authority to apply for this particular assistance, and that is exactly what we're doing. Council understands and agrees that participation in the program will require compliance with program guidelines and assurances. This is an emergency measure, and the emergency being that there's an application process and a deadline. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
Is this similar to the previous three hundred thousand dollar grant?
I'm going to refer to Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it's very familiar or similar. So, under the Ohio Brownfield Remediation Program, you can apply two different ways, remediation or assessment. We're gonna be applying for the assessment portion, which is capped at three hundred thousand dollars.
So, we're trying to get three hundred thousand dollars. Is that earmarked for a specific activity? Is it?
It's earmarked for the assessment of the power plant property. So, it'll go towards Verdantis's work that they either have already done because it's retroactive to July one of this year, effective to July one of next year. So, the amount of work that they're doing will help defray some of those costs and future assessment work that they're also gonna be doing.
And the reason I'm asking is, so, this will offset ALERG-funded activities? Or are we going to earmark it for maybe sediment sampling where we are having a gap?
So, the hope is, is that we'll be able to use some of it for sediment as well. It's a little bit complicated on how we're gonna address that issue. We have to be careful because these are state of Ohio waters. And this grant isn't specifically allowable for that. It has to be under this Brownfield action that we're currently doing. So, it'll offset costs that Verdantis will then be able to use for the assessment part.
And if I could respond, Mr. Shamir, I'm Mr. Mayor. My understanding is that once the city owns the property, then we're able to apply for Great Lakes Grants, we're able to apply for federal grants, grants that we tried to apply for before, but we were shut out because we did not own the property.
I would say, if I could just for a second, so it's having site control, not necessarily owning it.
Oh, right, right. I'm sorry, site control.
Purchase agreement, then we can do that. I just wanna say it also.
Thank you.
That this round of funding that we're currently looking at, this three hundred thousand dollars coming from, is from the one million dollars that each of the eighty-eight counties will receive. And so, we're asking for three hundred thousand dollars of that one million dollars that each county can get. And then, in the spring, another hundred and five million dollars or so will become available, which we also will assist in seeking. And this assessment grant goes a long way to be able to apply for that hundred plus, well, it would probably be capped at ten million dollars, we don't know that yet, but that larger amount of grant money that'll be available in the spring.
Mr. Shamir?
So, that hundred million, if I'm not mistaken, is also associated with remediation funds? Are we going after those remediation funds?
That would be remediation funds.
Okay.
In the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, we're gonna go on then to the next one. And Mrs. Rossmarin, if you could please read by title only, twenty-five dash one eight three.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to purchase Loraine County Permanent Parcel Number zero four zero 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 two one zero 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 two zero three, located on Avon Commerce Parkway in Avon, Ohio, from Coff Construction Corporation, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of council's rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. That has passed. I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash one eight three. And in discussion, this is an item that was voted on by Avon Lake Regional Water at their last meeting last week. And the reason that it is suspension of the rule with emergency is that they are in the midst of a purchase agreement. And they are wanting to purchase a very narrow piece of land that is parallel to the railroad tracks on the south side of Avon, I'm sorry, on the south side of the railroad tracks in Avon versus Avon Lake, for the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. And the description of the parcel is, as has been described, as permanent parcel in Loraine County of zero four zero 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 two one zero 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 two zero three. And again, it's located on Avon Commerce Parkway in Avon, which is really an empty piece of land. Any further discussion? Mr. Shamir?
Just for curiosity, is this being utilized for a right-of-way?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, this is right-of-way for their transmission lines, their redoing, actually, they're adding a new transmission line. They need this property to continue that property line, or I'm sorry, water line.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll, please.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Okay, we're now at ordinance number twenty-five dash one eight four. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with the Avon Lake City School District for the acquisition of the former Erieview School property located at thirty-two six thirty Electric Boulevard, Avon Lake, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. The intention for this is to go three readings. We all know where Erieview's located, on Electric Boulevard. It also consists of nine point five acres. The permanent parcel number is zero four zero 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 one eight one three eight zero six nine. And the way that the purchase price would be paid, the five hundred thousand, it would be payable in five annual installments of one hundred thousand dollars each beginning July first, twenty twenty-seven, and each July first thereafter until paid in full. These are not tax funds. These funds come from the developers at planning, when they go into the final phase of a subdivision, they put monies into the Recreation Fund, and they accumulate, and they can only be used for the purchase of future recreational park land. And this is recreational land. This ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure, allowing the timely execution of the purchase agreement to secure that property. Any further discussion from council members? Mr. Cos?
Yeah, thank you. I just would again encourage residents, if they have some questions on this, if not to reach out to members of the administration or city council, please go to the city website. We have FAQs on there that answer a lot of the questions that are out there in the community. And that should take care of a lot of the questions that the community has. If they still have questions, by all means, please reach out. But I see a lot of the same questions being asked over and over and over. And we have clear legal explanations for a lot of these things that are right there at their fingertips. So, I encourage the residents to do that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, is there anything that you want to add to this discussion?
No, you did a great job. I would just say that Erieview's about forty-two thousand square feet. The projected uses of this would be to house our Recreation Department. It would also house our Senior Center. It would house our Communication and Technology Department. What those two things do is they free up space here at City Hall, which is much in need. It also consolidates the Recreation Department in one building. Right now, they're a little bit spread out. It would also offer the Communication Technology Department more space to be able to utilize for the community, and increase their efficiencies. And obviously, it would also expand recreational opportunities for the community. There's a lot of uses that we've identified potentially to be used, including fitness classes, personal training, youth sports leagues, specialty camps, workshops, senior programming, seasonal events. There could go on, there's a lot of possibilities there. I also want to note that, as far as the price goes, the Erieview purchase would be roughly fifty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars an acre as a comparison of our last couple purchases that we've made of park property. Our West Shore Park, which is actually at the dead end of Moore Road, up along Lake Road, we paid two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars per acre for that property, although it was less than an acre, obviously. And in 2010, and Mr. Zuber's gonna be very well aware of this one, Avon Lake purchased Ilk Family Parkland, or, or property that was turned into a parkland, and that was at the price of fi- fifty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per acre. So this is a, a great deal economically for the purchase. Obviously, we understand that we have to work through the capital, potential capital costs, and operating costs of that. We had an assessment completed, we're hoping to receive that, John, in the next, at least this week, hopefully. And then we'll be taking a look at that to then plan out the strategy for eventual phasing in of that property for our use.
Thank you very much, thank you. Any further discussion on this topic? Yes, Mr. Shamir.
Just a question, so reg funds will be utilized to purchase the property, and that's gonna be paid over a five-year period. Will reg funds also be utilized for the repurishment?
No, that, that would have to come under Public Works and any capital funds that we raise. And then obviously, the maintenance of that would also fall, fall under our Public Works Department.
Thank you.
So, so the Recreation Funds, just to be very clear, are, it's very controlled how we can spend them, Mr. Shamir, when the developers put them into the Recreation Fund, it's only for acquisition purposes. Any further questions? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on then to ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Five. Mrs. Rossman, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a personal services agreement with the Mannix and Smith Group Incorporated for the LOR-US-six-dash-fifteen-point-eighty-seven Pedestrian Improvement Project, repeal in ordinance numbers Twenty-four-dash-sixty-nine and Twenty-five-dash-one-fifty-nine, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of council's rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossman.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. I move for passage of ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Five. And in discussion, I, I want to share with you that, once again, as it was shared earlier in the meeting, that ODOT, the Ohio Department of Transportation, has identified that we need to have a four-F environmental determination form completed, and a study completed. And what that form does is when there is a pedestrian traffic light, pedestrian control mechanism, they want to make certain that we are not preventing people from going into Miller Road Park. What we're preventing is having somebody get hit when they're trying to cross Lake Road. But in order to do this, we, we need to go out to Mannix and Smith. The cost of that study, and completing the form, and preparing it for ODOT, is ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Ten percent of it is the city's share, one thousand eighty-three dollars. Is there anything else I should add, Mr. Liskovik? Have you covered it?
No, I think you've covered it.
Very good, any further questions? Mrs. Rossman, the roll.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mrs. Rossman, Rossman, read ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Six by title only.
An ordinance authorizing a contract to Great Lakes Demolition Company LLC for outfall rehabilitation at Edgewood Drive, Avon Lake, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossman.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. I move for passage of ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight, excuse me, One-Eight-Six. And in discussion, as has been stated, this is for the outfall rehabilitation of Edgewood Drive. Plans were prepared, specifications were prepared, and they went out for bid. And from those bids, the city engineer has determined that the best and the most responsive bid was submitted by Great Lakes Demolition Company LLC of Clyde, Ohio. And this amount of contract is three hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. They want to start immediately, try to get this thing done before the end of the year. And the emergency measure is the necessity of rehabilitating an outfall on the shores of Lake Erie to prevent additional erosion, and thus is for the public health, safety, and welfare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs., oh yes, Mr., Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. This has been on our radar for many years, in fact, I think since I was on council, and this is a very
Before that.
Yeah, yeah, and this is a much-needed project. This is a dangerous situation at the end of the road there. I know that the residents there will be very happy when it's done. And I want to thank Mr. Ebert for all his work in navigating a very complex, non-existent HOA and getting approval to be able to make this move forward, so, thank you.
It's almost historic, that HOA, it's, it's been on the books for such a long time. It's a very, very large area, people didn't even realize that they were even part of it. But thank you so much for all your work. This work has to be done first, and then road work can be done. Any further discussion, Mr. Liskovik?
I apologize, but I just caught this right now. The amount of the contract as listed in the ordinance is incorrect.
Oh.
That is actually, that was the engineer's estimate for the project. The amount, and I don't have it off the top of my head, was significantly less than that, though.
I think I have
Okay.
Would you have the CCM agenda with you, Mayor?
This is part of, this is part of the public works.
We could put not, not to exceed, but that amount, add the language, not to exceed the amount.
The ordinance number is Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Six, it was on the public service agenda, and so it was not a CCM.
So the, the accepted bid amount was
No, the
Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Two-hundred, and, say it again, two-hundred?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Oh, that's, that's huge. Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. So the estimate was three hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, correct, big savings.
It's a huge savings, thank you.
And that does include the contingency amount as well.
That also, and I think, is there fifty thousand in there, or thirty thousand? Thirty thousand dollars in there for contingency. Thank you, Mr. Liskovik, this is great. So we're going to amend this, so that it reads two-three-seven-four-seven-five?
Sure.
Okay? Um, we need a motion to amend. Mrs. Rossman?
Mr. Arnold.
Motion to amend.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Thank you, that has passed. Now, let's go back to the original motion. I move for passage of Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Six, Mrs. Rossman.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Thank you, that has passed, very good. All right, now we're gonna go on to ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Seven. Mrs. Rossman, read by title only.
An ordinance approving the improvement plan for Harbor Crest Townhouse, Subdivision Number One, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, this is the first reading of ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Seven. It's for the Harbor Crest Townhouse, Subdivision Number One. Generally, these improvement plans can come over as a motion, but there are some conditions that need to be met. Those conditions are set forth in Engineer Howard's letter attached to the agenda. My plan is to pass this with the suspension of the rules on the second reading in two weeks, and go over it in more in-depth, in-depth, if anyone would like to, at the CCM next week. Additionally, I would just ask for the clerk to read ordinance One-Eight-Eight. There's a typo there, you have in the, in the agenda, it says subdivision number one, even though it's number two.
It's okay on the ordinance, so that's
Pardon me?
If you get to the ordinance, it's okay there, it's just a typo.
Yeah, I know, it's okay on the ordinance, sure. Just so when you read it.
I will.
Okay, it's just a typo, thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you, I have a question for you, sir. Will, will these conditions be satisfied by the second reading, which is in two weeks?
I believe that they will, the engineers did indicate, Mr. Saylor, that they would agree to all of those conditions, and that they would get them met as soon as possible.
And then, Mr. Liskovik, will you be receiving a letter from Chris Howard, City Engineer Howard, that says that these conditions have been met?
I, I believe actually, he usually forwards that directly to the Community Development.
So, Mr. Smith, you'll be receiving that then from Mr. Esborn?
I, I didn't hear who Mr. Liskovik said.
Mr., Mr. Liskovik said that Mr. Howard will forward directly to Community Development, which would be Kelly LaRosa and Ted Esborn, that the conditions have been met.
So
And then you'll need to follow up on that, make sure you get a copy.
We'll look for their correspondence, thanks.
Very good, thank you. And the reason I'm going through this, it's really important, I know it's taking some time, but ten years from now, or four years, or two years from now, residents are gonna say, well, they had conditions on there. Did you, as consul, ever check to see that those conditions were met? And yes, we do, thank you. Okay, moving along, we have one more. Ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Eight.
An ordinance approving the improvement plan for Harbor Crest Townhouse, Subdivision Number Two, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, ditto with the last one.
Any additional discussion on this one? Okay, very good. Any miscellaneous business and announcements? Mr. Cos.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I have three things.